The school's Board of Education to order. If you would all please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance. How about Mr. Babbitt?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome. Alright, let's go to item E, adoption and approval of the agenda. I don't believe I had any changes or questions. All those in favor?
I stand aye.
And let's go to minutes. Approval of the minutes at 22nd and the 30th. Help me soon.
Everybody is eligible for the minutes.
We're all good? Okay, did anybody, well first I'll take a motion. So move. Second? Alright, did anybody have any discussion on minutes, changes, clarifications? No? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Minutes of 22nd and the 30th are approved as presented. Alright, let's go on to student reports to the board. We've got Crossroads, we've got Snowman Mountain High School, Carpe Diem. Who'd like to start? Crossroads.
Crossroads.
Oh, do they need this one?
I'm going to be able to see if this starts together from the projector. See if this is.
Hey, what do we do?
You guys want to leave us? Do you guys want to use this?
No, they don't need it. It's on tower, yep. It's, it's on, it's just warming up, sorry.
Hello, my, hello, my name is Richard Cheese. I'm a ninth grader at Crossroads. My fellow students and I are here to give you a brief presentation on what's been going on in Crossroads this year.
Hello, good evening, my name is Joseph Carr. I am a eighth grader.
Hold on a second, we have all these great pictures. The picture, oh. Yeah, thank you.
And then you should fire it.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, sorry about that little thing, okay. Okay, it's not moving. Oh, there we go, okay, Joseph, there you go.
Hello, good evening, my name is Joseph Carr. I am a ninth grader at Crossroads. I'm going to talk to you about the day today at Carpe Diem. We have 29 students, 23 of students passing here for the, for the remainder of the students passing here for the day. We have seven goals and two objectives. We have four Saturday days and seventeen Monday days and eight night days. I would like to present you our school and its management.
Hello, I'm a eighth grader at Crossroads. I'm going to talk about some activities in your school. At this day in the hour of the school, all schools all over the world. We learn some of the basic rules of curriculum and game. We also want to play chess on campus. Luckily, we have enough of campus very late. Then some of the holidays, we decorate our schools. At lunch, we all hang down on the benches. It's a complete community here at school as well.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Nigueira. I am a ninth grader at Crossroads, an eighth grade school. I'm here to speak about students' hopes recently asked students for their reflection on Crossroads. Here's some of the responses we got. Edgar Garcia said the field trips and hikes that Crossroads goes on are very engaging. And Antoine Lembright said I love how it teaches care and never give up on this, even in the hardest times.
Hi, my name is Kelly Weiss. I'm a eighth grader at Crossroads. I chose to tell you about our class field trips. Our first trip was to see the movie Enders Game after we went to booking class. We went to the Wells Fargo Center to read French shows, together Warriors Don't Cry and Lady Smith Black and the Baller. We also received a grant from the literary club to go to the Young Museum and the Academy of Sciences in San Francisco. Our final trip this year will be to Charles Schulz's Mount Joy's Art Tuning and Go Ice School.
Hello, my name is Edgar Garcia. I'm a ninth grader at Crossroads. I'll be talking to you guys about our outdoor education. We have Archie Three and Jesse Patterson. They are Math Tam, Jack Lander State Park, and Tom Strong Redwood. While we're at the hikes, our teacher gave us assignments to complete. For example, we may do circumference and calculate the diameter of a tree. We have, we have one more hike this Friday at 7:00. Keep telling. Park. State Park.
On Tuesday of next week, we are having an open house at 6:00 AM. You are urgently invited to join us for our commencement ceremony on Thursday, June 5th at 2:00 PM. That's it?
Last time I called everybody up in order, and I started out by doing that, and I was quickly rebuffed because I was out of order. You guys have already decided, so I'll let you all decide how you want to deal with this. Everyone, I can't give that chance. Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Spirit Freeman, and I am currently a senior at Carpe Diem High School. I was asked if I would, I was asked if I was interested in giving a short presentation of some of the cool things that are going on at Carpe Diem, and I said yes. I was also chosen to give a speech for Carpe at our graduation ceremony, which is exciting, and I am looking forward to it very much. I picked just a couple of things to share about this year. First, this year on a, on our, on our larger outings and events, we started joining up with Snowman Mountain. This gave us the opportunity to meet and get to know students like us that live on the other side of town. At first, it seemed weird that they were on our, on our campouts and hikes, but after a while, it was cool, it was cool to know they were going there and some of us actually looked forward to joining with them. It makes us realize that even though that they are on the other side of town, we are all basically teenage students with many of the same goals and interests. Besides campouts and hikes, we also shared, we also shared a bus and attended a show Warriors Don't Cry at the Wells Fargo Center of the Arts. Another time, both schools attended the movie Enders Game along with Crossroads after they invited us to go with them. On June 6th, all three schools are going to celebrate the end of the year with a pig in the ground luau held at Snowman Mountain. Another thing I appreciate is the technology that the staff is putting in our hands. Currently, we have a class set of iPads and a cart to keep them in at Carpe Diem that also carves them. This year for open house, we use the iPads to develop electronic portfolios to show our parents what we are doing this school year. Besides the portfolio, we are using the iPads in class for researching and other projects. Fortunately and unfortunately, I won't see them, but next year, we will have a whole class set of Chromebooks to use for similar applications. On the subject of technology, this year, the students were given access to our own Google accounts and access to our Aries.net portal so we can see how our work is progressing. Missing assignments, graduation status, and other things. And between Snowman Mountain and Carpe Diem, we have earned four scholarships for $1,000 each, three for Carpe, one for Snowman Mountain, which I think is pretty good. And I am happy to see how much Carpe has changed since I've been here and how much this school has done for me. I have benefited greatly and wouldn't be graduating next month if it wasn't through the school and its great staff. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Lauren Boston. I'm currently a senior at Stone Mountain High School. I was asked to speak today by my principal, Mr. Stevenson, to talk a little about some of the new and exciting things we did this year at Carpe Diem at Stone Mountain High Schools. One of my favorite activities we did this year were the hikes. We had four stephle, but one was rain though. It was a great way for our schools to bond and have an act like a family in a school. I even look forward to going each time because it was a nice change being able to have a school day outside of the old halls. The first two hikes ended at the beach where we ate lunch before returning. Another major thing we did this year was the fall campout. Both schools have not had, held a campout in years, and it was pretty cool having a part of the school. The campout brought both schools even closer together by having activities like a campfire, frisbee, and a night hike. All students had to sign up before and participate in setting up camp, preparing food, cleaning up hall of gear, and breaking camp down. Although we had a few rough patches during the trip, we're learning along the way. Another awesome thing we did this year for our schools was to hold a couple fundraisers. Our first one was a holiday market set up by one of Snowman Mountain's students back in December to raise some money for school supplies and other things. Many students and parents turned out for the evening, and it was a big success. Carpe Diem also helped with coding drive to raise money for similar things. A fundraiser that both schools took part in was the Mary's Dining Room. It was held at Mary's Pizza Shop and was raised and raised money for some of the new technology our schools are getting next year. Chromebooks and cards to store and charge them. I unfortunately won't be able to use them. Another cool thing that Mr. Stevenson did this year was create a new school logo for both schools, which hasn't been done in years. With the logo, he made sweatshirts and t-shirts that the students and staff were able to purchase for themselves. I thought this was an awesome idea, as it's always been nice to be able to support your school and represent it. Another new addition involving the logos are the involvement mats and the foot of both schools. To me, all of these new additions have made it feel more like a real school. This school year, I feel like Carpe Diem and Snowman Mountain have expanded and have created more of a family environment for their students. Thank you.
I believe we also want to ask the school to. How about, give me that crossroad.
Hello, my name is Jessica Sandoval. I am the 2013-2014 ASB president.
Hi, my name is Emma Bryan, and I'm the 2013-2014 ASB Commissioner for Activities. Good afternoon, members of the board. Casa Grande has been very busy in past holidays. The Gaucho Gazette has won overall excellence and overall champion at the Press Democrat Awards. In addition, one of our editors in chief, Kili Chizam, won Journal of the Year. Mr. Merrick turned six animations for the countrywide competition viewing event at the theater in Southwest school, and they're waiting a year back if they're accepted. Two Casa students will be working on the Saritans menu business over the summer. In the print shop, they're printing the 200 shirts for the Big ID Sonoma Education Event in June, and they're testing out printing on hats to offer this as well for next year. Casa is implementing a $120,000 tech hardware spend designed to allocate to each classroom a standard suit of equipment. All classrooms will now be equipped with wall mounted projectors. A total of 99 Chromebooks will be purchased for classrooms as well as some Macbooks for teacher use. All classrooms will also be equipped with document camera. Mous Squad is coming to Casa Grande next year. This class will be based on curriculum supplied by a nonprofit organization whose mission is to help youth learn, create, and collaborate with technology. Mous Squad's primary role will be to support staff with hardware and software issues and to keep our tech ecosystem running smoothly. A student-led coding club will be launched next year. The aim of this club is to prepare for the AP coding test at the end of the year. The 2013-2014 Casa Grande Cheerleaders competed in national championships and placed ninth in the nation. The girls really rocked the place with their routine. Half an hour later, we experienced a 5.2 earthquake. The girls kept their cool during the quake as well.
In Miss Wick's chemistry class, they are doing a CSI unit. Students are learning to, learning deductive reasoning and strengthening scientific method. The unit will end with a project in which students devise a crime scene including testable evidence, dockers of suspects, and crime scene diagrams. Each group will then try to solve another group's crime. During the unit, students learn how to identify glass fragments, white powders, ink, and how to develop fingerprints testing for blood and revealing scrape off serial number etchings. This is all using various concepts as to how to develop fingerprints, test, oh, all of, all using concepts in chemistry. The biology teachers at Casa have been working on an exciting new common core aligned with the NGSS standards curriculum to roll out for the next year. Elaine, Michael, Jen, and Holly worked together on April 25th for the Louis Day. They had created an entire year's worth of brand new lab in curriculum, ordered the supplies, and are very excited to bring the new material all to all of our biology students next year. The art department recently participated in the Petaluma Arts Center Youth Show on Lake ville Highway. Laura Gomez, Gomez, a photo student at Casa Grande, won best of the show, and Victoria Jones, another photo student, sold her piece at the same show. Several other students exhibited in the show as well. Leadership is hosting a soft job for Mike Smith, a motivational speaker that came to Casa during Casa's Unity Week. He is part of a nonprofit organization, Skate for Change, in which, in the effort to help out the homeless people of the United States. Earth Day was hosted April 22nd, where we had local businesses come in like Roy's Hot Dog, John the Ice Cream Man, and Kailback, along with student-run booze and a horse named Shelby. Our last blood drive this school year was Friday, May 2nd, where Casa Grande students were able to save around 60 people's lives. Disney Day is May 23rd, officially titled Disney Presents Casa Grande's Happily Ever After, in which we plan on dressing up in our favorite Disney characters costumes, hosting a mad tea party during lunch, day-long activities, and potentially granting to Casa students a ticket to Disneyland, among other prizes. Thank you very much.
Little high school?
Hello, I'm Mackenzie Merida, and I'm this year's ASB Vice President. Petaluma High School has been busy, busy, busy these past few weeks. To start off, in March, we had the WOS committee come and evaluate our school. We enjoyed having them, and we are happy to say that we passed and had a successful self-study. In preparing for the WOS visit, many students and clubs got together to beautify our campus. It's kept its sign, kept its shine since then. Our drama department just finished their spring production of Legally Blonde musical. It was a fabulous show featuring a wide variety of PHS students. Many parents, students, family, and staff came to support the show and all loved it. Our boys lacrosse team have been playing excellently and are on their way to the state tournament for the third year in a row. Girls lacrosse has been doing great as well, but unfortunately, they lost their championship game. Our girls softball team has also been putting their best foot forward and has been having a great season. Boys baseball has been heading their way through a great season as well. Our track team has been running an awesome season, and they have their varsity finals this weekend. Our Petaluma High School seniors are so excited for prom this weekend. It will be taking place at the Hotel Niko in San Francisco this Saturday. We will also be having a very busy week next week. We have our Senior Sunset, annual FF Big Car Show, Senior Rally, and yearbook distribution. The seniors are also very eager, very eager for graduation taking place at Ellison Field at 10:00 AM on Saturday, June 7th. It's been a wonderful year at Petaluma, and next year will be even better. Thank you.
Just came to go in the.
So camaraderie? Welcome anytime. You're welcome to come up and, I put you on the spot last time, I'm not going to do it again. Alright, just as a matter of sort of logistics here, we have one more presentation. I would really appreciate it if y'all could stay for that. After that, we will be having a short break, and that way, anybody who needs to go, stressing the term "needs" to go, the rule is open and applicable. So let's have, we can have one?
Actually, Ron's at a workshop this evening, so I get the opportunity to, and it's going to be Kathy, I'm trying to work for CSEA to chair the member of the quarter.
Good evening, Kathy. Want to change this?
Good evening, board members, superintendent, principals, teachers, and students. CSEA represents the classified workers of Pelham City Schools. There are over 325 of us in the district. We are secretaries, library coordinators, custodians, campus supervisors, childcare assistants, bus drivers, food service workers, grounds, and maintenance workers, just to name a few. I am the CSEA's first vice president, and one of my duties is also, I'm chairperson of member of the quarter. So it's my pleasure this evening to introduce our CSEA's member of the quarter, Blanca Fuentes. Blanca has been a classified employee for over 24 years, and during those years, she has worked at several school sites and held many different job titles. Blanca currently works at McDowell School as a bilingual clerk typist and family mentor. Blanca's career with Pelham City Schools began in November of 1989, when she was hired as a bilingual instructional assistant at Kettleworth Junior High School. She later transferred to Pelham High School and then McDowell. In 2003, Blanca also became the bilingual clerk typist at McDowell, and a year later, she worked at both McDowell and Pelham High School. In 2004, she became a bilingual program clerk at both schools, and in 2009, she also became a family mentor at McDowell School. In addition to all this, she has worked as summer school senior secretary for many years. Blanca was nominated by a coworker at McDowell who wrote the following on her nomination form. Blanca is very friendly, helpful, caring, and warm. She translates documents with great care. She communicates with parents gently and cheerfully. She has so many different tasks in her day, yet works calmly. Her friendly ways make McDowell a great place to be. Another coworker says, I have worked with Blanca in various capacities, currently with her in the office. She is extremely reliable, efficient, and friendly with everyone she works with. She loves the students as well as her coworkers. Blanca always has a smile on her face. On behalf of CSEA, we'd like to present you a certificate. And we always ask our member of the quarter what restaurant in Pelham City would like to get a certificate to, she chose a piece of coffee in a jar for $25. Thank you for being an outstanding member. And please join me in congratulating Blanca Fuentes as her CSEA member. I also want to mention one other thing. Blanca's daughter's here, and several coworkers and her principal came tonight. Thank you very much.
On behalf of the board, on behalf of the board, on behalf of all the members, assistant and mentor, the last member of the board, thank you very much.
I really thank you. Perfect, thank you.
Alright, as promised, we will take a short break. We would encourage all of you to stay. Understand if you have lives, you have everything you need to do, so if you do have that need to leave, now would be the time to do it. What's happening? I saw you all in yesterday. Just finish up the lacrosse. Miss play basketball? I don't miss any documentaries.
She gets a favor. I talked to Dana about my.
We'll talk.
Are you checking your hobby now?
Started wandering back to me quiz.
I told her not to.
Yeah, we didn't prepare a location, sent an email, sent it to Troy Sanders. Could you sit down? Are we back? Alright, so this is a public comment card. If anybody else would like to make public comment tonight, I'll need a card for you. So if you would do so for me now, that would be good. I'm not seeing that I jump up and make a public comment, so there we go. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and read the rules regarding public comment. I might add to them a little bit, but let me read this first. So I'm taking public comment cards, you know, if you have them, we just came in, if you have public comment to make, let's make sure you fill out a card form.
I was with Crossroads.
Yeah. Are you still also making public comments? What's going on in the back of the room? This thing? I'm not talking to you. What's going on in the back of my mind? Sorry about that presentation. I'm happy to record the show, everybody. You can put it over there when I'm ready for you, I'll call. Okay, great, thanks. Under Government Code, section 549543A, members of the public have the right to address government board on any items of interest provided that relates to. Is that okay? Subject matter, jurisdiction on the school district. Of course, board policy BP9323. Each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of 20 minutes on each subject matter. Above reference, government code law speakers criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees. The district does have a current policy BPAR13121, specific to conflicts against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district before. Board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor before investigation. Board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. Board values public comment, which is conveyed, although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. We listen carefully, and we appreciate value and valued input from the public. I'm trying to decipher this, and if I understand this correctly, this is from Mr. McGowen. We want to resume at minute six. You want to resume at minute six, your prior public comment that was halted.
Cancelled. You cancelled our public comment against our rights. We'd like to get our public comment back. We have the names that you have on the bottom of the card that actually say that's the public comment that we earned. You, for reasons I cannot understand...
Are those people here?
Those people were here last time?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that's correct.
No, are they here now?
They are not here now. No, because you have actually intimidated and frightened everybody from making a public comment because you actually cancelled our public comment for no reason and directed your superintendent to make the citizen's arrest of someone who made a public comment.
I would prefer that we get through this meeting without having to adjin- a break again.
Absolutely.
Or, excuse me, you do not talk until I ask you to talk. I'm not going to tell you that again. Doing that would be disturbing a school board meeting, which is a violation of the Act, which is, I think it's misdemeanor punishable by five hundred dollars in something. So we're not going to do that again. So this is our meeting. You'll talk when you're told to talk, and you will not interrupt again. If you do so, that will be a disturbance. That can't be any more clear than that. Okay. Now, with regard to this, I will share with you that when the meeting resumed, once the disturbance from the prior meeting was resolved, these people were called, they were not here, regardless of whether they were here or not at that time, certainly not honoring this. So, you have five minutes.
Right.
Do you have... What is this?
I have five minutes, and I have to figure out what to do now. I have about nineteen minutes of presentation, because you cancelled it.
I understand, I asked you directly what this is. I don't want to hear any brother...
I don't understand the word "this."
This, I'm pointing at this, this TV. What is this? What's going on here?
That is a presentation, is it not? We've been doing this for months, sir.
And is the presentation you, or is this somebody who's phoning in, or is this a videotaped presentation?
This presentation is in support of my comment.
No, 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 it's not what I asked you.
I'm answering the question as truthfully as I can, sir.
I asked you the direct question.
I'm giving you a direct answer, sir, but it may not be the answer you'd like, but I still have a chance to give a direct answer to your asking a question.
Answer me.
Let me answer you. I have rights as a public comment speaker. I have five minutes to use my time as I see fit.
Answer the- no, you don't, and answer the question, or we're done. What is this?
That is a presentation. What else do you need to know?
What I just asked you. Is this yours? Is this somebody calling in? Is it- what is this? Tell me what you're going to do with this reply, or not.
To be honest with you, I have not been able to prepare my five minutes presentation, so I'm going to start, and I'm going to wing it. I'm going to pick and choose from things from my website to support what I have to say. I might dip into some of the video from last meeting that shows exactly how you cancelled our public comment and you actually violated California law.
Is this you, or is this this person?
It might be you. It might actually be somebody else who spoke here.
No, 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 no. Is this you?
I'd like to get through this. I mean, yes.
I'd like to get through this, but we don't have to.
I'm wanting to get through it as well.
Okay, so, the last time that we had this problem here at this meeting, you had someone call in.
They started using audiovisual materials, that's correct.
Who was not physically here.
Correct, and there is no board policy that talks about it whatsoever in the printed board policies on your website.
Are you going to be the one presenting this, or not?
I will be presenting tonight.
So long as it's you presenting, you may proceed, you have five minutes.
All right, and I can take a second to get set up.
Just a...
Thank you. Just move this down, move this up, and talk about it.
And of course, this is for our benefit, so you'll spin it our way.
Sure, I would prefer to use the projector. Would you allow me to use the projector like everyone else who gives a presentation here at this meeting? Do you allow me to do that, sir?
No, but you can spin that our way.
Okay, so public comment speakers are second-class citizens, and we don't have a chance to use the projector like everyone else. We're being forced to...
Hey, use this. Either make your comment.
That's a violation of the Brown Act, sir. Just pointing out all your violations tonight.
Make sure you point out the section one violation. Do that. Go.
I'm not ready, sir. Just came set up. As soon as I get ready, I'll let you know.
No, no, no.
Twenty seconds away. Twenty seconds away. All right, I am ready to go. This is a demonstration piece that we were not allowed to use last week. I don't have time to use it again. I'm not going to try to turn it on and measure it for you, but I did measure it last time I was here, and I'm going to measure it again. This is a router that actually looks very much like the routers we have in our schools. When you turn this on and you plug it in, you can take a professional meter, and you can measure how much radiation comes out of this cone. What is this cone designed to do? It means that if you're shielding from this side, you don't get as much radiation. It means it's all getting funneled out of one side. Currently, it's not plugged in. We're not getting any radiation. But what it really does is it simulates what happens in a classroom when there's twenty-four iPads, because twenty-four iPads are allowed to have ten watts of radiation coming off of them by law. This is what allows to pass them. When you have twenty-four of them downloading a video at the same time, you have about two hundred and forty watts of microwave radiation in a classroom. This classifies as weapons-grade radiation. We know this, and we have videos that show it. I have given you all of the links to the videos. You are now informed about that. I know what the measurements are. Two hundred watts of radiation is and more than what we actually gave the Soviets, beamed at us at our embassy in Moscow from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen seventy-eight, and there were many, many illnesses documented. The amount of power coming out of this, the amount of power in a classroom, the twenty-four iPads downloading a video, matches or exceeds that level. You are putting weapons-grade radiation voluntarily into schools without having the right to do so and by not following California Education Code. What do we have here? We have something I shared with you in September of two thousand and ten. It is a calculation. This calculation was agreed to by senior engineers at the FCC and OSHA. They agreed on how to actually look at cumulative total radiation in a classroom. The amount that you get here is seventeen, seventy-five million in one day. So far, in the Valley Vista classroom, we have exceeded our federal maximum public exposure guideline over twelve hundred times. That is unconscionable. This is on all of your logics. You've ignored this information, and we're going to reach a conclusion very shortly. You've ignored this for three hundred and sixty-five days, three hundred and sixty-five days, neglecting the health and safety of children. Why? Because wireless is a carcinogen. How do we know? In February of two thousand and thirteen, I shared with Ms. Bowman and all the rest of you that the World Health Organization said it was a Class IIb carcinogen. There's Education Code thirty-two oh six oh, thirty-two oh six two. It says specifically, you cannot have a Class IIb carcinogen in K through six classrooms. End of story. I will read for you right off of the page that you have in front of you, right here. "To educate their students, schools routinely purchase educational materials, including art supplies and other materials, charged with an even higher duty than parents to protect children while they're in school. The California Legislature found that art supplies containing toxic substances, of which are potential human carcinogens, pose a significant danger to the health and safety of schoolchildren." It goes on for five more points. It shows you exactly what the codes are, and it tells you that microwave radiation at the levels you're doing is a Class IIb carcinogen, is not allowed in schools. Therefore, because you have violated many, many California laws, including all of your make-by laws for how you're supposed to behave, don't have time to go through, we'll do it next time, what your goals are as a board, you have violated them all. You are not providing a safe learning environment for our students, and you are not spending our public money wisely. We are asking for yours and your reservations this evening for the ridiculous act of placing a public commenter under misdemeanor citizen's arrest. You have crossed the line. I have reported you to every single body I could believe and think of. I have agreement from the ACLU, from the First Amendment Rights Coalition, from the Sonoma County DA themselves, from everybody involved who's ever looked at this. They have viewed the video, which I do not have time to show tonight, I will come back and show it next time. When you do view that video, there is no crime by anyone in the public comment arena. There are many violations committed by all of you who conspired to create this event because you actually stood up and walked out together, and when it was time to go, before your gravel hit, there was a female voice that came up on the video, very clear to hear, that said, "We're done here." Before you said, "We're done here," proof of the conspiracy that this event was planned ahead of time, designed to entrap, and therefore, out you went. Thank you very much for asking for your reservations, and we will take actions against you starting tomorrow.
All right, moving on.
You follow the law?
You're done.
You follow the law?
You're done.
Sit down.
I don't get to answer my question.
You're done.
Okay.
No law law, you follow.
Got it. All right, so let's move on to item I, reports activities that correspond to school board members. Do I have anything that we want to report on that? I know we've got a lot of stuff coming up. Congratulations.
We started them off last night with TLT's graduation, tomorrow's graduation today.
I had the district leadership team last week, and we had our first review of how the budget applies to our local control campus planning, and that will be coming to the board visit the first, anything in June?
Yep, it'll be on public here in a minute.
I visited, you know, Sonoma Mountain, I was with Mr. Stevens, and he was fascinating, and as we saw tonight, he loved the presentation, he's really doing incredible things with the children there, and all the outdoor hiking, and overnight camping outings, and ending with a luau here coming up in a couple weeks, so it's probably very inspirational.
We had some varsity softball games, and announcing the senior day for varsity softball at Padilla High, and then, like Sherry said, went to TLT, the graduation, and Mary Beth Benedetti, who gave a lot of time, I think she was the director, for four years, it was her Schwanz song.
Oh, really?
But she went out with the bank, she graduated, great kids, and I think it's being passed on to some good hands, it's a great program, and there's a lot of kids that have really, I think, benefited from it.
And some varsity baseball games, it looks like sport.
Voice announcement.
Very good. Let's go to the consent agenda that's item J, looking for approval, but I'll take a motion for that approval. Okay, let's go to employment report, resolution thirteen fourteen... Oh, excuse me, where are you going? By the way, this is a lot more condensed, it looks like it's part of the same thing. Excuse me. Item two, resolution thirteen fourteen twenty-nine, consolidation of election services. And this is a resolution for the request of consolidation of services to the Marin County Board of Supervisors for the November fourth, two thousand and fourteen election. Steve, I would probably do that, if you would just quickly explain why we're talking with the right people about consolidation.
Thank you. So, the high school district is not only southern Sonoma County, but has some of northern Nevada County. So we have to have consolidation of the election to be incorporated on the Marin County ballot as well as the Sonoma County. So on every two-year basis, we take this action to consolidate the election services for the November election.
So I've got a motion, and second, always in favor?
Aye.
Poked. And the sister, resolution to this, it's ordered, resolution thirteen fourteen thirty, specifications of election, and this is approval, specifications of election order on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen, for the general election.
This is for the board election in November first. This is Sonoma County action.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Poked. This should have kept everybody from the ceremonies for item four, huh? Resolution thirteen fourteen thirty-one of the Board of Education for the city of Long Island High School District, County, Sonoma State of California, honoring the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education in the clearing of May nineteenth to twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, as Classified School Employees Week.
Just to, this is in honor of our classified employees who provide so much service to our district in support of students every day, from bringing students to school, leading students to, we have Blanca here this evening, providing bilingual support, and office staff. They're very valued and a part of the quality education provided in our district.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Poked. Item four is passed. Item five, the second reading of amendment to board policy five three two three, meeting conduct. This was brought back onto the agenda based upon, that we got tabled almost a year ago, on two-two vote, and clearly there's some need for discussion on how to conduct meetings. So I'll look for a motion, and second, I'll look for some discussion.
Second.
Okay. So you're going to start, and you want me to jump in, or?
Go ahead.
So, unfortunately, last week, two, excuse me, not last week, two meetings ago, it was like last week. We have to, I think in all the years, help me out, Sue, in all the years that we've been here, I don't think we've ever had to break a meeting because of a disturbance. We keep hearing that our board policy doesn't address certain things that members of our public have attempted to do in these meetings, and this is just an attempt, as it was prior, to clarify those policies, so there is no question. And although it was my opinion, and it's the opinion of the council, that the board president has a wide range of discretion in handling how these board meetings are conducted, and absence of a particular directive, for lack of a better term, and a policy does not necessarily mean that it is okay then, I brought this back to the board to continue the discussion that we had prior. So I'll open it up, if anybody has any comment. This is the exact same policy that came back to, or there was here.
I think it was last January, maybe?
Last January.
And that required a PD judgment, or was the amendment that issued the italicized one?
Yeah, the italicized one.
I don't think anything was taken out, I think it was just simply clarification.
And that wasn't added, that's always been in?
No, that's clarification.
Yes, under consideration this time.
Hasn't changed, the proposed change.
Any discussion with this board? Yeah.
No, I think, you know, I've rethought this, and I've thought about it a lot, and I think that the opportunity for people to make presentations to the board is still there during the presentation time, with preapproval, as evident from when our principals and our students give presentations. Public comment time, people shouldn't be intimidated by their own lack of technology, they shouldn't be intimidated by what others are doing, and they should be able to kind of speak freely, and it shouldn't be destructive during meetings. So with that said, I'm comfortable with how I'm going to approach that.
You have a comment from the board?
So is someone in public comment would not be allowed to use any devices to enhance...
It's pretty little, so it's, no audiovisual devices used during public comment. I'll tell you the background.
Ah!
Don't.
I got a comment, tell it, huh?
No, you don't. Did I tell you to talk to it? No, I didn't, so, don't. So the reason for this, in my mind, and the Brown Act, I've gone through it a number of times, and we have talked to council about this, about this, about this, is that public comment is that time, it's the canary in the mine shaft. It's the, hey, board, there's an issue here that you need to be aware of, let me share with you what I think of as an issue. That, to me, is public comment. That's where I'm concerned.
For me, I have bought into public comment and appreciate the efforts that many people have given over the years during public comment, and especially those who share, you know, from the heart, things that they are very passionate about. And the, I can just say that the comments that have been most strongly understood are those where the individuals came and spoke from the heart, not just standing there reading something. We've had those too, and I understand that for some people, I'm not referring to this gentleman here, for some people, that it's a nerve-fracking thing to come and speak to the board, and so it's easier for them to be able to come and read their own piece of paper. Totally respect that. But to me, public comment is strictly that, it's a chance for them to come share their concerns about a particular district issue, related issue to the board, and it's not a time... related issue to the board, and it's not a time for a presentation, it's a time for a comment, and that's why, um, there needs to be a distinction between the two, in my opinion, so that's...
Whether I read this, I don't know if there's anything that precludes somebody from handing out...
Oh, absolutely, I welcome all flyers, letters.
Or written script?
Right, absolutely.
Well, and at some point, too, I mean, like Mr. McGavin was saying, went over, by sending us emails and sending us links, and, you know, at some point, we get to view information and make a decision on it, whether it's in public here together or privately in our mind as we're viewing what people share with us individually, and coming, preparing ourselves for meetings and for being out in the community and whatever. And, um, I just feel like our public comment time is getting taken over, and, um, I, I just think it's an abuse of what public comment's supposed to be.
I would also like to, to extend that by saying that any emails that I receive with videos and other, um, areas of, of interest, concern, et cetera, I, I would need to review all of those, so that that also lets the public know that if they have something they want to share with the board, there's another venue where we can individually have the time to look at it and review it as opposed to during our regular board meetings.
Especially since public comment, we can't talk back, we can't share, we can't, you know, it's very, very limited on what we can do. We can't get involved in the issue and start talking about it since it's not on the agenda. So it's really a time for someone, and it's not all people that have concerns that they feel are something detrimental. It's oftentimes people coming to share something that's coming up, an event, or something they're happy about, or, you know, and so it's, it's just kind of informational and not, not seek, get a boost. And I don't think other people should be intimidated by it, too, and that's clearly happening, in my opinion.
Personally, I like, um, physical presence. I like people to get here and take the time to prepare and make their comment, and wherever they're coming from, they're coming from, and I enjoy hearing all the views. There's a, an opportunity, obviously, whether you're speaking to us, the audience, or even the folks watching, and, you see, to verbally lead people to a website or through a handout that we can all then choose to go there and, and further educate on the subject, whatever it may be. So, uh, but I like the idea that someone is moved enough to come down here, and I respect that, that they take time to come down here. I just think it's something parks and rep, people come down and make comment, and a lot of them have great suggestions, and so I really respect that, that they come here and share their ideas. There's a wealth of ideas out there. So I like the physical presence part, as opposed to, you know, somehow maybe video looking somebody in, or, you know, getting a Stanford lecture series or something. Um, that, that's certainly guides, plays some educational value, but I don't think it's a public comment.
I guess I would just simply finish by saying, um, based upon discussion with council, as well as to, I just pure common sense and going to the end, reading the Brown Act. This is a clarifying policy. This doesn't change anything in my mind in the sense of the authority of the board has for any of the reasons they do. So, I guess that's fine with me. That being said, now we have five minutes of public comment.
We only have five minutes? I guess before comment on a degentized item was not, was allowed by board five minutes?
Five minutes? Would you like, would you like to comment?
I would like to comment five minutes. You have already dealt with this issue once before, and you voted on it, and you did not pass it. I'm not sure you can bring it back. So I guess I'd want to take a very careful look at that. You tried to do this in, over the summer. You tried to limit public commenters and their abilities to use all the same presentation materials that we use right here. You've already illegally prevented us from using this, and so we have actually shared all this information with the First Amendment Rights Coalition and the ACLU, and now I'm going to read you some of their response, okay? So, essentially, what we're going to do is go through, uh, what they have talked about, your violations of the Ralph M. Brown Act by virtue of your actions on 4/8 by cancelling our public comment illegally, and as such, you also try to direct much-too-much personal direction on the public commenter's time and ability to make their presentations. It's very clear that the public comment time is sacrosanct. It is not something that you can step into and direct as you, you see fit. That is not your role. You're overstepping your role, you're cancelling our rights as one of we the people, guaranteed to us by the U.S. and California constitutions. You have taken an oath to uphold those constitutions. Therefore, you actually have to follow California law and the Ralph M. Brown Act and Education Code 32060 to 32062, which I've covered up before. That goes right over your head, but that means tomorrow you must turn off your Wi-Fi, because tomorrow you will be violating California law.
Stick to the agenda.
I am telling you exactly what you need to do. You need to follow the law, and you can't just not listen to the law. You will be forced to follow the law. You must follow the Ralph M. Brown Act as well. So the bottom line is that you have done very bad things in this meeting last week, from 4/8, and intimidated other people for making a comment. That is what makes it so egregious. You actually carried out a citizen's arrest of someone who was standing up for their God-given sovereign rights, because you weren't pleased by how they actually chose to speak and when they spoke. A group of people who have twenty minutes to speak can allocate the time among all of the people any way they wish. They do not need to follow your direction to say, "Ah, ah, ah, you have to do it this way, or I'm going to arrest you." "Ah, ah, ah, you have to do it that way, or we're unhappy." This is overstepping your bounds, and this is what you have done to violate the Brown Act, and why you must step down, sir. You do not actually respect California law, you do not follow...